City Council Meeting, November sixteenth. The first item of we are meeting virtually. Hopefully it's clear for all who are listening. The approved, I'd like the first agenda item is to approve the minutes for the November second council meeting.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second agenda item, the clerk treasurer's report, Lori.
The board's been, the council's been presented with the clerk treasurer's report for the month ending October thirty first, two thousand twenty.
Anyone have any questions, Lori?
I'll move to, Judy.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes. The third agenda item is a hearing of public concerns. I believe we have a gentleman in the chamber. You'd like to tell us your name first and then what you'd like to discuss. We ask that it try and stay within a five-minute period if possible.
All right.
Okay. First, I should tell you all that I'm a Army veteran and I have a very serious hearing defect. I'm almost deaf from my service, so please bear with me here. Thank you. Could you give us your name, please? And?
And your name.
I'm Jerry Zimmerman. And? Thank you. And I'm not used to publicly speaking, so please bear with me. See, I had to write it down so I don't forget things and have things in the right order. Greetings to your honor and Police Chief, if he is there, and all the councilmen and women. I'm Jerry Zimmerman from Edgerton. I have been based in various police departments in Ohio and Indiana, seven so far. Your Police Chief invited me to give a short talk to the mayor and city council. The Bryan Police Departments and the William County Sheriff's Department serves your city and county to protect your lives and your families. Also residential and business property. My son-in-law, Brian, is a police officer, has been serving in Painesville, Ohio for over eighteen years. About a year ago, he received a special commendation for saving a woman's life. And my wife prays for a lot of police officers daily. The owner of signs twenty-four-seven is Mike Worthington. He has a machine that makes ten yard signs this size at a time. He will do these at his cost, ten dollars each. Normally, he sells this size sign for sixteen dollars. He appreciates his police and sheriff's department. And of course, the steel stand goes with the sign. And this one here is the tenth one that he has made. I'm not asking the mayor nor the council to purchase these signs and stands for the residents in your city and county. I am only asking for advertising and promotion of this project. Perhaps a sign could be placed outside of the city and county buildings so that the people would drive by and or walk by and notice them. I noticed that you have a very nice illuminated, high-tech sign in the next area of this building here between the buildings. And maybe that could be used for little advertising like they do in Edgerton. The Edgerton fart apartment has put many, many smoke alarms free into the residents' homes that they request them. And so I just want to thank you for the privilege to speak to you. And I want to have the credit go to the mayor and the council for doing this project for the citizens of Bryan and Williams County. I'm here because I care for the citizens of Bryan and Williams County. I desire to remain anonymous and not receive any recognition for this project. Please consider a reporter from the Bryan Times to stop by Mike Worthington's business to take a picture of his business and the sign that he has in your, in his yard. If you desire to examine the sign further or take pictures of it, I'll leave the sign in the building here. And also, I gave the mayor a couple of Mike Worthington's business cards. At this time, is there any questions?
I don't know if I heard correctly, what does the sign say? I couldn't hear everything.
Okay.
And I can't see it, it's, you're way too far away.
So do you want me to, I'll take this to my office.
The mayor said she'd take the sign to her office and show it to you on her camera. By the way, I have one in my yard that says Edgerton Police and Williams County Sheriff's Department on it. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. What we'll do is wait for the mayor to make some kind of thought and proposal from her staff to council. Probably ought to go by legal and some other folks as well. But we certainly appreciate your time and effort and and support on this, on this project. Thank you very much. Thank you. Agenda item four.
You're off the hook.
Is an ord- I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Nope, I was letting Mr. Zimmerman know he could go if he wanted or stay if he wanted.
Oh, okay. Yes, because this is very exciting stuff. That's actual sarcasm, I'm sorry. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number two for the project known as Don North Building. Lori, if you could number and read.
Ordinance number fifty-two, two thousand twenty. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number two for the project known as Don North Municipal Building, North Vestibule Edition.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief on this. What we have is the architect planned on extending the air conditioning system from the existing building out into the vestibule, but there is no place to do that. There's no ceiling cavity, nothing like that, and he's struggling trying to get the boiler lines out there. So he felt the best thing to do would be just to put a little unit heating and air conditioning system in the ceiling. So by the time he adds in deducts, we're asking for an add of six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Now, if you remember, a month and a half ago or so, we came in and we deducted a little more than five thousand for a door that we deleted. So it's only an eighteen-hundred-dollar add, ultimately above the original bid price. But it's something that needs to be done. I just recommend you suspend the rules and approve it. Side note, they're hanging drywall tomorrow, so things hopefully are going to wrap up here directly. I know they've been blaming a lot on COVID with materials and whatnot, which I know we're all tired of hearing that, but we're trying to get it done as quick as we can, just so you all know.
Well, Brian, I had two questions and you answered them both, so.
Okay, good.
I move to suspend. This is Judy.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, Rick.
I'll second, Jim.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, have a good evening.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, agenda item number five, an order for, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, declaring an emergency. Lori, could you?
Ordinance number fifty-three, two thousand twenty. An ordinance providing perennial appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request from the Home CDBG revolving loan fund for rehab repairs for a thousand dollars for a late-year project and a request for fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the communications fund to allow for a transfer to the five thirty-five communications capital reserve fund, which will follow in a subsequent ordinance, for a total amount of appropriation requested fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, Judy.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
A motion to approve, this is Mary.
I'll second, Rick.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Agenda item number six, another ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan, month ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Lori, number and read, please.
Ordinance number fifty-four, two thousand twenty. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This is a transfer request from the electric fund for one million dollars to the five-one-five electric capital reserve fund, a transfer of thirty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents from the water fund to the five-twenty-five water capital reserve fund for capital purchases. A request of fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to be transferred from the communications fund to the five-thirty-five communications capital reserve fund. All three of those items were requested at the last Board of Public Affairs meeting. And a transfer request of one hundred thousand dollars from the half-percent income tax fund to the five-oh-five sewer drain maintenance fund. And this is in regard to the camera purchase that you approved at the last meeting, I want to replenish the fund. Total amount of transfers requested, one million one hundred ninety thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
Mary, I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt, Rick.
I'll second, Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And item number seven is a resolution to urge Governor Dewine in Ohio legislatures to extend the deadline for operating the public meetings electronically. Lori?
Resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty. A resolution to urge Governor Dewine in the Ohio Legislature to extend the deadline for operating public meetings electronically.
Want me to address that? Yeah. Would you like me to address that, Mr. Betts?
Yes, please, Rhonda, my microphone's weird.
Okay. So we had previously had an order from the governor allowing us to have a moratorium on some of the sunshine laws to meet as we are virtually. That order was extended, but not to go beyond December first, two thousand twenty, or so long as the public emergency order is in place. And there's been some question about the language of what is the emergency order, is that still in place? And everyone would just feel more comfortable if the governor would actually give an extension date on that moratorium from the sunshine laws and allow us to continue to meet virtually for a period of time. Now, by giving this support, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. It also doesn't mean that you can't come back sooner if it does happen, just like we have been doing. It might be extended out to March. If we go back to Orange and you feel like you can, want to come back to the council chambers, you know, that's a choice that you can discuss and make. We just want to have the ability to ask for the sufficient of time to meet virtually and have that confirmed by the governor. Thank you.
Understood. Motion to suspend, anyone?
I'll make a motion. And this is Judy.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Then item number eight is permission to post, Chief Chappa?
Hello, everybody. I am here tonight requesting permission to post and advertise for position of police captain for the city of Bryan Police Department.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Appreciate it. So it's go-around time. I don't know why I get such humor out of my, my own wit. It's probably not appropriate. So if we have any city employees that would like to stay in anything or any, any BPA members that, that would like to make any statements, this would be a time to do that. Here it is now at this time, why don't we start with Rick this time? Okay, I just want a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Jerry Zimmerman for his presentation coming to council. I know that it's a lot of times out of people's comfort zone to, to speak in public and I appreciate his willingness to come in and talk about a very important subject like the police. And I just encourage everyone to mask up and be safe and it doesn't only protect you, but also protect others. So please be safe. And that's all I've got. Ms. Judy?
Yes, I first would like to say thank you to Jim and to Patrick for getting my Wi-Fi up and working last night. It went out because of the windstorm that we had, so thank you for that. I also want to say, stay safe, wear that mask up over your nose, please, and to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving.
Ms. Mary?
I want to did everyone else say, please mask up over your nose and smile while you're doing it because you can see the eyes are smiling and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Jim?
I'd also like to thank Mr. Zimmerman for his service and his presentation. Echo everybody's sentiment on masking up and I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Rhonda?
Nothing else, sir, thank you.
Lori?
No, sir, thank you.
Mayor?
I do have a few things. One, Brian Whelan and I worked on the Dora sign that will go, I don't, I can't put it on the whole screen, but we really tried to pick a design that fit our C-three district requirements with the earth tone. This is kind of a lighter bright purple. And then we met with the commissioners on a Zoom meeting on Thursday and all three did vote to allow us to place those signs basically at the edge of the sidewalk. They don't want anyone on the green space or the sidewalk leading up to the building, but the street that they own and then the sidewalk that they own are allowed to be within the Dora district. So I think that that's a great compromise for everyone. I appreciated the commissioners meeting us in that because of enforcement. I was worried about how that would be to communicate to the public, that half the street was okay and half wasn't. So very grateful for their cooperation in that. I've been communicating with the chamber regarding cups and signage. I think we'll probably put a video together, probably a couple Zoom meetings at different times for the business owners to kind of go over the rules of the Dora so that everybody's on the same page before this rolls out on January one. I do want to encourage you all as council members, I am not going to lie, the days are very busy. The COVID conversations and conference calls are ramping up. So if you have questions for me or if you hear something and you want to talk to me or a department head, please do that. Again, we don't know, that you don't know something unless you tell us. So I never intend to leave you out of the discussion. Sometimes some of it's just day-to-day. So if there's ever anything that is a concern to you, please reach out to me and ask. I'm always willing to have those conversations, I welcome them. But with that being said, I've been on a lot of calls with our governor. He's very nervous about the numbers. I'm nervous about the contact tracing in the schools. It has really been a stress for our kids and it's nerve-wracking for the educators. And so I hope that they work something out. I know the governor right now has a task force together working on the extent of the contact tracing for kids that are masked to see if maybe that fourteen days is a little too long for them, considering that most of those kids are not getting sick from what the data is that I'm hearing. I'm, I don't know any more than you guys do as far as what's going to happen this week at a state level. I hope that our businesses are able to remain open. I hope that if they're not, we all really patronize them with takeout. They've gotten really good at that. But it's just, it's a really hard time because the holidays are coming up when I think some of them make some of their best couple months in sales. And so we just have to make sure we do what we can to communicate to the public to continue to support that. So thank you.
I just have a couple, a couple of kudos, if you will, to a variety of people and entities. One, I'd like to thank all the voters, Bryan and Williams County and state and national wide for their responsibility in fulfilling their, exercising their responsibility to vote. I'm very strongly encouraged by that. I also want to thank all the poll workers, which I've had the privilege of doing four or five times. And anyone who's a poll worker knows that free and fair elections are absolutely guaranteed and are absolutely happening with all the, all the checks and balances within that. If you have any doubt, I would strongly encourage you to get a hold of the Williams County Board of Elections and work as a poll worker for one or two times and you will understand the scrutiny that goes in to the voting process. So thank you to all the poll workers and all the Board of Election personnel for an outstanding job. It's tireless and thankless and I, I just wanted to say I definitely appreciate that and thank you very much. Second of all, we often mention the value of our city employees and their service that they render to make Bryan a great community in which to live and work and play. Tonight, I'd like to shine a light on three specific individuals under the rubric of, or under the concept of law enforcement, Chief Siders, Chief Chappa, and our city attorney, Rhonda Fisher. I believe it was Joni Mitchell, someone can check me on this, especially with Google, you know, you've got, you better be accurate or someone's going to fact-check you. But I believe it was Joni Mitchell in, in the early seventies that wrote a song about the parking lot. And I believe it was something like, "You don't know what you've got till it's gone." And I believe that statement is more than just about our environment and parking lots. It's also about and can be applied to people. Few know or understand what it means to be in charge of a lot of people whose job it is to protect us twenty-four-seven. It's a great responsibility and never-ending. The Chiefs, Chief Chappa and Siders do it and do it well. So I want to thank them for all they do and keep up the good work and doing the right thing. Even fewer of us have any idea of all the duties and responsibilities of our city attorney. She must just sit in her office and, and think of how do you keep the city covered. That would be one of a thousand other tasks that are involved. Rhonda not only keeps the city legally compliant and covered, but spends a great deal of her time in a coordinated effort with our excellent municipal court and all the cases that she gets involved with there. So thank you, Rhonda, for your tireless efforts in that regard. The last thing I want to say is there is some very positive news regarding an effective vaccine for COVID-nineteen. But between now and then, when the vaccine is available, please wear the mask, socially distance, and including the upcoming traditional family holidays when it's going to be easy to kind of let our guard down. This is not a good time to let our guard down. As you can tell by the Bryan Times and other news media outlets, we are in a time where our hospitals are becoming overwrought. we are in a time where our hospitals are becoming overwrought. ProMedica, I found out a few days ago, is limiting their entry, and many hospitals are getting overdrawn. And that is not good when people need to not receive the hospitalization services that they need because there are no beds available. So to be able to make sure that doesn't occur, we all need to make sure we mask up, stay away from folks, try to limit your shopping issues. I certainly support, and as most of the entities around here know, I do a lot of carryout at a variety of places. So I support that we support them during this difficult time, but we also need to make sure that we keep each other, and I do emphasize that, each other, safe by masking up and keeping socially distanced. So thank you for all the people that are doing that. I see a lot of that going on at various places. But then again, a lot of people have reported to me that I'm not going at the right times. Going at a time, as a retiree, when it's not as busy and most all of those people are masked up. I'm being told that at other peak times and on weekends, it's not quite as robust. So we're going to want to make sure that we do that. Try to remember, because I was just called the other day about what could we do from a city perspective because they saw a woman get extremely irate at a retail entity with an employee. Come on, folks. Come on. Come on. The worker's trying to do the right thing. My understanding of the conversation was the person said, "Ma'am, may I please ask if you pull your mask up and not wear it around your neck?" And went off like a roman candle on it. Come on, folks. Come on. Let's be civil with each other, thank them, and pull the mask up. If you don't want to do that, then you can certainly exit the store. You've got to remember, it's now different. There is now a state mandate that they can be shut down by the state for a 24-hour period. So let's try and keep some civility and understanding of repercussions for our businesses. And that's it. Thank you very much. I would approve, or I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn, Jim?
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.